Let's call the Northfield Township. There you go. Let's call the Northfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for May 21st, 2018 to order. Let's all rise and say, "Pledge Legions."
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to propose that we adopt the agenda that was provided to us in our packets with one change. I would like to move the approval of the minutes to immediately after correspondence, since we usually handle that up front. Is there any objection to that revised agenda? All those in favor?
Well, I'll support it.
Thank you.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there any correspondence to deal with other than the correspondence that deals with this, uh, this, the public hearing and the new business? I didn't see any in my packet. Yes, good year.
Chairman Safranik, you need a roll call vote? Item number three.
Yes, I will do the roll call. I'm present. Mr. Dignan?
Present.
Mr. Kolecki?
Here.
Yep. Ms. Otto?
Here.
And, uh, Mr. Kuzno? Mr. Basili? Use an alternate. Okay. Uh, move to approve the minutes of January 22nd, 2018. I would entertain a motion and a second in that regard.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I, I like, as I noted, I don't think we have any correspondence. So now we open the, uh, the public hearing on case number JZBA 180001. This is commonly known as the Sutton Schoolhouse, and the address is 2931 East Joy Road, Ann Arbor. Parcel number B02344005.
I'll make the motion to open the meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're now opening the public hearing on the Sutton Schoolhouse. And just, uh, so everybody's on the same page here is, "It appears that the applicant proposes to build additions to the existing schoolhouse building and demolish the attached or detached garage structure on site. Parcel is zoned agricultural and is a non-conforming lot. It has an area of .5 acres. Single-family use is permitted, uh, under the zoning ordinance, uh, and the proposal would require variances from various sections, including expanse and substitution, regulations and standards, regulations and standards of different types, et cetera." So before we go into all those details, let's, uh, could I have the proponent of the, uh, of the, uh, change for the Sutton Schoolhouse?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the CPA, my name is Matt Hagerty, attorney of the law
for Myers &amp; Hines &amp; Howell. By the brief background, I actually served the Northfield Township Legal Council for seven years. In fact, the last time I was in this building was at a township board meeting on the other end of the building. So, yeah, it's nice to be back, seeing how big it is Monday night. I represent Sutton Schoolhouse LLC, who's the named applicant, um, and who also happens to be my aunt and uncle. My uncle Dennis Hagerty is here as the managing member of Sutton Schoolhouse. And as the chairman indicated in introductory remarks, this particular property, we believe, which is a half-acre lot in the Ag, the zoning district, with a five-acre minimum, it's at the southern end of the township, way along the border of Ann Arbor Township, near Joy, on Joy Road, and near the intersection of Pontiac Trail. On the property sits what we believe is, in all likelihood, the oldest structure in the township, the Sutton Schoolhouse, whose construction dates back to 1839. It ceased being a schoolhouse in the 1960s, and it had some sporadic residential use until early 1990s. It's been in the Dubrowski slash Hagerty family for over five decades. My aunt and uncle, longtime Northfield Township residents, acquired the property in the name of the LLC in 2017, but again, as, as you may have seen through some of the historical background I provided, in support of the application, it's been in the family for a long time. And so, uh, once the LLC was formed, the decision was made, it was high time to both improve for residential use and, and keep the historical character of the schoolhouse going, as a project that I think has, is pretty unique in the township in that both saves some of the historical character and also allows for residential use in the township, which is, again, permitted in the Ag zoning district. The variances we seek are relatively modest, considering the half-acre lot that we're dealing with. It's, it's essentially seeking to expand the building envelope by about double, increasing the square footage. And I can remiss also by didn't speak with the nuts and bolts of the design, by didn't also introduce, um, Mr. Dennis Denzer, who is succeeded to Dennis Hagerty's left. He is the architect on the project with Arcadia Residential Design, and he can also speak to any of the nuts and bolts of the actual design of the project, if any of the board members have specific questions for it through the course of the public hearing. So again, the, the variances we seek are relatively modest, considering the topography and the site locations, 22.84-foot front yard variance, 23.5-foot rear yard variance, and a slight deviation from the overall lot coverage, 10% maximum to 11.6%, is what the applicant seeks. We're not going to expand anything beyond what the required side yard setbacks already have in place, so those will, those will actually remain. And in terms of the front yard setback, we're not actually extending the proposed addition anywhere beyond the existing building envelope. So in other words, the existing school structure slash house will, as it sits today, will be the furthest, the closest point to Joy Road. Of course, to put the expansion in the back, we do need some relief from the rear yard setback. Utility company owns the property directly behind it, so there's no adjacent neighbor in the back. And I had the opportunity to sit down with Perry Byrd, and of course, Ms. Krishnan was very cogently helpful in walking us through the process, and very diligent in turning around the review and informing us, as Byrd did, of a guessing mix-up when this meeting was originally published, where I guess the legal news, despite getting, getting the notice, didn't actually publish the, uh, the notes in the hearing itself. It delayed us for a bit, but, um, we're here. And self-internally, the last point I'll make, before I entertain any questions of members of the board, is that I think based on Ms. Krishnan's helpful review letter and the correspondence that we provided, I think this, this particular variance and project was tampered with and meets the six criteria, which the members of the board are duty-bound to assess as to whether or not the variance should be granted. And I won't believe we're going through all of them unless there's a specific one, any member of the board has questions about, that either myself, either of the Dennis's could, could address more specifically, in terms of construction plans and design. But suffice it to say, we do believe there's a practical difficulty, given the half-acre, one-tenth the size of what otherwise is a buildable lot in the Ag zone. Seek a residential use that's, they're different than the surrounding properties, and I think it'll be in accordance with the general demographics and, and design. It's actually pretty exciting, but I know my uncle has poured a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in getting the site in shape, having to flag some members of the board to go out there to see where the variances would actually be on the ground. Boss Engineering has done all the, all the work, survey lawyers on the project. It's already met, heard, so it's, it's got this preliminary Washington County Health Department approvals, and I think, other than tearing down the existing structure, which will actually help alleviate some of the sort of lack of issues, it's a knockdown shed that's kind of in the corner of the property, that, that'd be forthcoming if you get the variance and, uh, the construction, beginning earnest probably within a month or so. Is that entertaining question the board has, or any other issues you'd make that you'd like me to cover?
Has anyone had any questions?
No. Well, I guess, besides the garage, when you say shed structure, is that the same structure?
That is.
Okay, because I know it's on the back of the existing building, and there's like a shed roof off the back, but obviously that's gonna be ripped off too, because you're gonna create an extension, or you're gonna move the building back that many feet, correct, in your drawing?
The, uh, the existing footprint?
If you would please step to the microphone, introduce yourself.
The existing footprint of the current house will remain?
Right.
But yes, that goes, uh...
It's like a little shed roof off the very back?
That roof is gone.
Right.
The walls are, the trellis are gone. It's going to be put back to the same caliber as the rest of the building. In fact, the addition will all be reflective of the character of the original building.
Yeah, so I saw that in your drawings.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any provision for garage? For garage?
Any provision in terms of plans from the applicant?
Right, I don't see any, I don't see any provision for garage.
No, we, we have no immediate plans, no, quite a bit behind. So the rendering, as you see, is one of the exhibits covering the application. There's essentially, exhibit G, is essentially what, I should say, essentially is the, is one plus to the existing half-site.
That's right. Right. How about? Sure. Uh, what are you planning on plating the addition?
Brick.
Brick.
To match as closely as possible the brick that exists. Actually, that could be located.
Any other questions?
No, I just had, thank you, that this is an excellent packet. Um, it was really good to go through and get all the background information on it and know exactly what's happening. Usually we don't get these, um, great pictures of the property.
Appreciate that. If sat at your side of the dais, you understand that it makes, everyone's gotta be sure they've got all the information on the red zone to make this decision, so. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just had, if, if I'm looking at this correctly, then the primary use of the existing structure that's there will be like a kitchen and great room area, or... Okay, so there's not even much going on inside there, other than I see a mechanical and, and a, a, a small, uh, um, half-bath there. Okay. Thank you. Again, I'll also compliment you on the packet. It's, it's very helpful for us to be able to see things in this much detail. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Very nice. You can let, uh, Kelly and Roger know that I say hello, okay?
I will do that.
Would anyone else like to speak about this, uh, this application, this, uh, this matter? Somebody else is interested? Yes, please come to the microphone and say who you are.
My name is Tim DeLorean, president. Just to the ease of the copper and the questions, we're at 50.45 Pontiac Trail. And I, I haven't heard why a variance would be. The codes that are in place are, have been established in order to preserve the principles of development in the township, and especially for a five-acre lot. So in this case, we're looking at a half-acre lot, and considering providing a variance to a lot that's one-tenth the typical size of a residential lot. And I'm not sure, and I'm not sure why, I haven't heard why under what I would think would actually be more exclusive conditions, because it's a much smaller residential lot. What would be the justification for granting a variance?
Mr. Chairman, would it help if I actually go through my review letter so the members of the audience are familiar with what the standards were, so that their questions would be more well-placed?
Sure, that might be helpful. So why don't you just take a minute, and, uh, we can even provide a copy, I'm sure, of that letter.
I will go through my review letter, and then I'll be able, happy to answer any questions that you have, based on that.
Yes, good year, please do that.
Okay. At the township's request, you may have a seat. At the township's request, we have reviewed a variance application submitted by Sutton Schoolhouse to build an addition to the existing schoolhouse building and demolish the detached garage shed structure on the site. The parcel is zoned AR, which is agricultural, and this is a non-conforming lot of record with an area of .5 acres, since the minimum lot size requirement is five acres. The single-family use is a principal permitted use in this district. As the applicant mentioned, they were originally scheduled for your April ZBA meeting. Unfortunately, the newspaper published some other notice, wrong notice, and it didn't make the state's cutoff timeline, so they had to be pushed to another meeting. The proposal is going to require five variances, four variances, I'm sorry, from the zoning ordinance. The first one is from Article 29, non-conformities, expansion, and substitution, to construct additions that do not conform to the regulations of the district in which they are located. The second, third, and fourth variance are from Article 6 for the Ag district, Section 36, 158, regulations and standards. Front yard setback, 50 feet is required, 19.58 feet existing, 27.16 feet proposed. A variance is being requested for 22.84 feet. Rear yard setback, 50 feet required, 26.6 feet existing, 26.5 feet proposed. Variance is being requested for 23.5 feet. Lot coverage, maximum 10% permitted. Proposed coverage is 11.6%. Deviation being requested is 1.6%. Now, any request for variance is reviewed by the board based on a set of standards, and these standards are established under state law. As long as an applicant meets the test that the state law has established, the application has to be approved. I will go over those criteria and our analysis in detail, so if you have any questions, hopefully this would answer them for you. The first criteria is strict compliance with the restrictions governing area setback, frontage, lot coverage, or other non-use matters will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. The subject site is the location of the Sutton Schoolhouse, which was built approximately in the late 1800s. The structure on it transitioned from being a schoolhouse to a dwelling, and has remained vacant for a while. The structure is in need of repair, and the applicant's addition proposed is modest to make it into a viable single-family dwelling. As mentioned previously, the subject site is one-tenth the minimum required lot size for the Ag district. As a result, even the existing dwelling on the site currently, the existing structure, is a non-conforming structure. The intent is the proposed addition lines up to the back wall of the existing dwelling, while the front wall is setback further than the existing structure from Joy Road. If the applicant were to strictly comply with the ordinance standards, it would be impossible to build on this parcel, and the parcel would be completely unbuildable. Rendering a parcel unbuildable is considered to be unnecessarily burdensome and takes away a property owner's ability to use their parcel. So the applicant's attempt is to decrease the non-conformity of the parcel by at least removing a portion of the non-conformity, which is the detached shed or garage. That is completely non-conforming too. So to a certain degree, while their additions do not meet with the setbacks, they are overall reducing the degree of non-conformity of the site itself. Not allowing the applicant to seek any variances would essentially mean the parcel cannot be used, and you cannot take away a property owner's right to use their parcel in any manner that's allowed by the order, ordinance. Second criteria, the variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. Approval of the variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant by allowing them to build an addition, rehabilitate and reuse a historic structure within the township, and is not adverse to the interests of other property owners in the district. The dwelling and the proposed addition are not in the vicinity or close proximity to any structures on the abating properties, and when I say close proximity, it is from a point of view of fire, safety, view, light, air, other similar issues. So it is not going to affect the quality of life features for the neighboring properties. The third criteria is the variance requested is the minimum possible to provide substantial relief and is consistent with justice to other property owners. As I mentioned, if you look at the drawing provided by the applicant, if the applicant were to conform to the setback requirements of the district, the building envelope is this tiny sliver that is one feet wide. That's all can be built, because the front, the rear setback is from here, the front setback is from here, which technically means you cannot even, you can put a two-by-four on the property under the zoning ordinance standards. That's all will fit onto the property. It's really small. And the reason, as was previously mentioned, this property is considered a zoning lot of record, which means today our zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot size requirement of five acres, but this lot was created before our zoning ordinance came into existence. So it is considered under law to be a lot of record. It is non-conforming, but it is recognized as a legal non-conforming lot of record. The fourth criteria is the need for variances due to unique circumstances that are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, and not generally applicable in the area or to other properties in the same district. As the applicant mentioned, the Sutton Schoolhouse is probably the oldest public building in Northfield. Based on the history, the present half-acre parcel of the schoolhouse building was conveyed to the present family that owns it in 1963. Over the years, the parcel has been conveyed multiple times to the extended members of this family. The history of this parcel makes it unique, and unlike any other in the township that we have come across. Therefore, the circumstances that are associated with the parcel based on its history, and based on the history of the structure, cannot be attributed commonly to other properties that would be found in the Ag district. The fifth criteria is the problem resulting for the variance has been created by strict compliance with the ordinance, and is not self-created or created by the applicant's predecessors. Now, the problem necessitating the variance is the small size of the lot and the existing structure, which is tied to the parcel itself. The applicant is not the creator of the original .5 acre lot. So zoning cannot hold them responsible for something that pre-existed, their acquisition or ownership of the parcel. And finally, the variance will be in harmony with the spirit and intent of this ordinance, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. We believe the variance is not likely to have any adverse impact on the neighborhood or on public health, safety, and welfare. The intent of zoning and land use planning is to provide for orderly development of land and its use. Even with the variances, the applicant is complying with the side yard setback requirements, which is very critical when we review any proposal, because coming closer to your neighbors on the side is what cuts off light, view, air, and creates an issue in the event of public safety or an emergency. In this case, the applicant is making full effort and is complying with what the required side yard setbacks are for the districts. So this is basically the standards based upon which the project was reviewed, and why we believe the request that made today before the board is a reasonable request for variances. I will reserve my recommendations still after the members of the audience have had a chance to offer their comments.
Yes, sir. Come back.
Thank you. Repeat the second, uh, question, please.
The, the variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant? Is that the one?
Third, maybe it was the third one, I referred to, uh, the neighboring, the neighbors in the area.
Uh, the variance requested is the minimum variance needed to provide substantial relief to the applicant, or is consistent with justice to other property owners.
And that was the third?
That was the third, third criteria for review.
Could you read the second one?
Sure. The variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant, as well as other property owners in the district.
So by, as well as other property owners in the district? How is that, how is that decided in terms of the neighbors that are involved in this decision? And that, with regard to that?
The critical issue over here is the very existence of the non-conforming lot. The parcel is .5 acres, which predates our ordinance's minimum requirement of five acres for Ag parcels, which is strictly enforced across the township. If the applicant happened to own any of the adjacent parcels also, the applicant would have been forced to combine the parcels. We would not let them keep them as two individual parcels. All of it would be considered. But in this case, the applicant is the owner of an isolated piece of land. By not allowing them to build on it in a reasonable manner, we would essentially be taking away their right to use the property, which would not meet the test that the state has set. Previously, state law had a criteria that just said, "Is it a practical difficulty?" A few years ago, the state law was revised to say, "Is it unnecessarily burdensome?" It's a totally different test between practical difficulty and unnecessarily burdensome. So, at a time when it was said, "The only criteria that you can use to evaluate any variances is there an issue with drainage on the site? Is there a slope? Is there any physical attribute in the property itself that would make it impossible to build?" Those were the only things we were required to consider. But then the law was changed to say, "Is compliance with the ordinance going to be so difficult that they simply cannot use their parcel anymore?" And in this case, yes. If they were to comply with the ordinance, they cannot do anything with the parcel at all. It's just too small.
So, everything that I was able to follow in response to my question addressed the side in that condition of the, the lot's owner, but I didn't hear anything addressing my original question as to whether the neighboring lot owners were going to be served, or what their side of the public sector would be using.
Okay.
But that wasn't burdened on them. I didn't hear anything you said address that, which, that's my question, is, so the condition is invoking the, uh, the rights of neighboring lot owners?
Absolutely.
And I'm not hearing how, uh, those rights are being either represented or considered at all in this decision, or in this recommendation?
Under the standards of review, the consideration to the neighbors is given in terms of, is it infringing upon the side yard setbacks? Is it going to affect safety or access to your parcels? If there are other concerns above and beyond that, that is the reason for the public hearing. You would state those concerns to the board, and the board would take that into account. Mine, my review letter is an analysis based strictly on what the law says, but what the actual neighbors over their experience or what their concerns might be is the reason for the public hearing. So if you have any concerns that are still not answered, then you would have to vocalize specifically what those concerns are about this request for variance that would affect your enjoyment of your property or your right of use of your property, and that's what the board will take into account when they're making their decision.
So those conditions are being, or those concerns, any concerns that neighboring property owners may have are intended to be engulfed into the overall decision according to these conditions?
Absolutely. Your, the whole point about having a public hearing is the public's comments also matter. So your concerns, that's why you have a board of the citizens itself, so they will take into account what you say, and if it has got a material bearing on the request, their recommendation will be accordingly. So, if, after our analysis of this proposal, you still have concerns that you believe is going to affect your property or your debt, you would state it on the record tonight so that the board can listen to that and respond appropriately, or take that into account when they're making their decision. when they are making their decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would be happy to give you a copy of this letter. I can, if I have your, I don't have access to the copy, but I'll make sure you get a copy of this letter.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Would you like to present some of your reasons regarding this?
Sure. Well, I'm sure you know that there's been a lot of development south of Pontiac Trail in several divisions, subdivisions that are going on down Nixon, down Pontiac Trail. And the, the temperament of the development in our area there has been very, again, five acre plot. And there's a certain spirit, a certain environment that's attempting to be upheld and that we chose in that area to live within. And in trying to build this kind of a residential structure on a half acre lot, we see that is compromising the, the environment, the temperament of the environment that the township has been promoting through these regulations, ensuring that that kind of environment is being perpetuated, preserved. And we see this as moving in an opposite direction. To, to create that structure on a half acre lot so close to Joy Road, there are neighbors on the other side, right next door to this lot. They're not here tonight. I don't know if they have provided any written feedback on this in regard to, that would be Henry and Crystal Russell. But bottom line is, this, this type of structure is compromising the, the look, the environment, the temperament, the, the physical lay of the land in that, in that part of the, in that part of the township. And so while it may meet all the technical specifications that would simply allow it to happen, I think there's, again, I think that the neighbors have a certain right and given that the township regulations are seeking to promote and establish and protect that kind of residential portraiture, that environment in the township, to see that compromised at our expense is of concern. Thank you.
Through the chair. I'm sorry, through the chair. I'm curious when this gentleman had moved into the township? How long you been in the township in your current property?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay. All right, thank you.
Can I respond to him?
Nope.
Why don't we wait just a little bit? Let's take a public comment and then we'll give you an opportunity to talk. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is George Kemp. I'm a KTMTF, old time German member of the community. I have a, well, a few comments to make. Number one, my question, I'm going to ask, is this going to be residential housing or is it going to be converted to commercial?
This is a single family home. That's all it's being approved for. It's going to be a home, one family.
Thank you. That answers that question, but the other thing, gentlemen, and I'm sure you're aware of it, Sutton School is the only remaining school, old school in Northfield Township. It's on the land and why is it called Sutton? The first settler, settler in Northfield Township was Mr. Sutton, who donated that land to the school. A number of us in Sutton, in the back room, went through those eight grades and it's sad to see something like this go the direction that looks like it's going. Suggestion, and I talked to another gentleman today on the Historical Society. This to me would be a beautiful spot to restore, keep it in the area of the school. Maybe Historical Society use it for offices. I can just see so much more use than the proposed use and I concur a hundred percent of the comments made by the previous gentleman. You're cramming something on a small lot, you're very restricted. So number one, I'm opposed to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kemp. And congratulations on those eight years you spent there. They don't have schools like that anymore. Would anybody else like to speak?
Well, I don't like to speak, but I really, my name is Dorothy Shear and I used to be Dorothy Cap. That was my maiden name. I'm one of those that went through the eight grades at Sutton School, as well as my brother was sitting in the back Dale Cap. And my brother owns the farm on Nixon Road where all the development is going on. While we are happy to see the design that's put into this new school slash whatever, we're a bit unhappy because we wish that it could remain a school and maybe used as a museum or something historical. And I don't know if that could happen, but it's just one of our wishes and we wish it could be that way. The other thing is, and I don't know if this is true or not, but we've heard that this is going to be used as a bed and breakfast. And if that's the case, you know, that doesn't seem right to me, that that could be allowed to be a bed and breakfast. You know, and so I just don't know what to say at this point, but we are very passionate about the school and wish it could remain a historical site. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Shear, just a clarification. It is being approved only for a single family home and nothing else. It cannot change to a bed and breakfast or a duplex or any other kind without coming back before the township, at which time it will not be allowed to happen. A single family home is the one and only use that would be permitted for that parcel at this time.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Delaunay, whose wife and I don't need to be uninvited to this. If the neighbors were here on the other side, they were planning on coming to the meeting that was in April, but they had a family vacation planned for this week, so they couldn't be here. They definitely have some concerns and, and though it is a, maybe a residential, single family use, that does not exclude them being able to rent it out as Airbnb kinds of activities. So you could have an overturning of who's in the house all the time. The family that lives next door has a large family, lots of grandkids. That's a concern. We were a little bit distant from that, so that's not so much of a concern for us. But I just echoed the idea of our township look going what's happening south of us and wondering why on a small piece of property like that, why you wouldn't keep it very small if you were going to add, why would you be adding so many bedrooms to a very small property? It just doesn't seem to fit or, and they, they may have the right to rent it out as a bed and break, or as an Airbnb, and I know that that's a residential use that can be permitted, but we just do need to say that that's not what the neighbors would like.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Delisle. I'm on Spencer Road, so I'm not a neighbor and I totally respect that my next, my next door neighbor is nonconforming. I understand that feeling that they're already too big on a too small lot for where we are. But for me, this one building is too special to let it, what's been going on all these years. We've, we've lost two schoolhouses since I've been resident in the township. One right down my road was demolished by the township and that was really a crime. And another collapsed because no one was taking care of it. These buildings are expensive, they're hard to take care of. I know I own an eighteen sixty something house. I appreciate, it's a lot of work. And this is a beautiful school and I was really impressed with the plans, that they really took into consideration the school. I mean, I went out there Friday, I looked at the stakes and I was concerned because it's got a beautiful side lounge with the big windows. And the stakes were there and I was like, oh no, they're gonna like glom it on there and it's gonna lose all its character. But that's not what they were doing, as long as it's according to the plans. They've totally respected the scale of the building, the beautiful aspects of the building, and are exactly mirroring it in the addition with the center. I've worked with a lot of architects trying to renovate a historical house and I used to drive by this house regularly when it was covered up with scrub and falling down and wished that I could buy it and renovate it myself. So I'm really glad that someone is going to do it. They put in a lot of time and effort, as you can tell from the packet, you can tell from the designs, this was not thrown together. They're actually respecting the building. So I, I feel bad for the neighbors if they have concerns and certainly those should be taken into account. And I don't want it necessarily to give variances for every little nonconforming property in the township, but this one, the preservation value of what they're doing, I think, is more important than sticking with the, the exact setbacks. So I really appreciate the effort that's been put into it.
Jennifer, can you stay up there? I have a question for you. Are you still on the Historical Society?
I am, but I am speaking as myself.
I know.
Because I don't.
So I have a, I just have one question, not to do with this, but does the Historical Soci, where does the Historical Society get their money?
Uh, we don't get much.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars to put into the building.
Okay, so.
Individuals might, you know, like somebody was saying, you could do a Kickstarter campaign, you know, maybe we could come up with it. I don't know, but.
They normally don't have a budget for purchasing property?
I do not have a budget.
And renovation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I wish I did. And, and, you know, there are people out there, they might be willing to step up, but no, we don't.
Mr. Kemp?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Kemp?
Just a comment to answer that, I just have a question. There is grant money out there available and it may be checked into depending on, you know, if this is going all up or down. There's no need running after something if you can't make it work, but there, there is grant money that could be available.
Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Okay, you would like to respond or at least speak to this matter?
What's your name again, sir? My name is Dennis Dinser, D.I.N.S.E.R., Arcadian Design, Fenton, Michigan. This is not my first project for the Haggardys. They're absolutely wonderful people. I've been doing this for thirty-five years. You don't find any quality people who respect tradition very often, the Haggardys do. The, the current schoolhouse has fallen into a state of disrepair. I was asked to breathe life into this and at all costs preserve the historic nature of the original building. The, the addition to this building is respectful of the scale of the original. We are matching the floor height, we're matching the wall height, we are matching the cornices, we're matching the roof pitch. The original building will be restored as the new addition is being built. We will match materials as closely as absolutely possible. Dennis is absolutely meticulous about this kind of thing. The original structure is just over eleven hundred square feet. As it stands alone, it's almost impossible to use that as a commercial structure for offices, as I've heard suggested. In addition, if it did become anything commercial, you would be dealing with traffic, parking, and lighting at night, all of those things foreign to the current use of that district. This house?
I don't, I don't think anyone's proposed that.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to address, address everything that I've heard. The house is right on Joy Road, it's at an intersection. This property could easily become a commercial property. If we can't do what we're planning on doing with it, it will lose its value to us. If that were to happen, it would certainly get gobbled up by some commercial entity, knocked down, and the schoolhouse would be lost. I am proposing that what we are planning on doing is the way to preserve the schoolhouse, to protect the schoolhouse, to restore it, the addition will match in character in every way the original structure. Despite our smallness of lot, we have missed the lot coverage by just 1.6%. We, we are being as delicate as we possibly can about this new structure. The front face of the new structure sits back seven foot, seven inches from the existing. We, we will, I've heard the phrase, the look, the environment, the temperament. We will continue all of that in spades. It will be restored, it'll be better than it is now. It'll be a little bit bigger, but it'll be better than it is now and it will be preserved as a residential lot. And the, the wave of development is coming. I'm afraid that if we don't preserve this as a residence, it will get gobbled up as a commercial property due to its proximity to main roads and it will get torn down. I would propose that we are the route to preserve that schoolhouse. Many people have spoken emotionally, and I agree, about preserving that structure. We want that too. We are the route to get that done.
Anyone else? I, I do have one question. Dennis, you and I met out there, seems like it was really cold, but it's still really cold, seemingly really cold. You had told me at the time that you weren't intending on living there, but you were thinking of using it as an air or as a, as a rental property. Is that, is that kind of an accurate representation?
We have no intention of using it other than a long-term, single-family residential.
But not yourself? You're not moving out there?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Unless something happens.
Sure, sure, sure.
I get kicked out of the house.
Yeah.
I'm only, we only live two miles down the road.
Okay.
But we can, my wife and I considered an Airbnb. We both totally rejected that idea for a couple reasons. Don't want it to be considered to be commercial in nature. And I'm not sure exactly what the law is now in Michigan, whether Airbnb is considered commercial.
Sure, sure.
We have no intention of doing that and I have no intention of being a motel manager.
Right.
Our intention is, first of all, to, once we restore it, to offer it to family and friends that may want to rent it on a long-term basis. Then if that doesn't work out, then we're gonna, obviously you cannot and will not discriminate, but we are going to vet very carefully and screen anyone that, that rents that property because we are making a substantial investment in it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Can I make a little more comment?
Sure.
With regard to the immediate neighbor, the side yard setback is thirty feet. Our proposed addition would be sixty-one foot, eleven inches from the side yard, more than doubling the.
More than doubling the standard required by the ordinance. Is that clear? Am I making a mudda of this?
No, I get it. I got it. Any other questions? Okay, I would move to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion in that regard?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing for ZB, JZBA 18001.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next to agenda item, old business. Do we have any old business? I don't think we have any old business doing. Okay.
I just want to mention one thing.
Sure.
We will have to, at our next ZBA meeting, elect officers.
Oh, great.
That was supposed to be done the first meeting of the year, and we hadn't done it, so...
Now, we're halfway through the year.
It's listed on, as your next agenda item actually, over here. If you look at 8B.
Oh, election of officers.
Election of officers.
Super, perfect. Okay, new business. New business now.
I listened.
Under new business, I now want to call case JZBA 18001, popularly known as the Sutton I will ask for a motion for approval, so that we can at least have the motion on the floor before we discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make my recommendation and respond to some of the public comments, then it'll help about-
Sure, beyond the rec, beyond what you've already read before, you're not gonna reread the whole thing, you're just gonna respond.
No, I'm just going over my recommendation.
Sure, that'd be fine.
To respond to some of the concerns that were raised at the public hearing, there is a lot of respect in the township for the citizens who have lived here for decades. And the township, and as your zoning administrator, we are always cognizant of the fact that the Ag zoned parcels are to be preserved as they are. The concern that was expressed regarding compromising of the environment, you're talking about development taking place in Ann Arbor Township to our side. This parcel is on the border of the township. We do not have any control or say what happens south of us. That is entirely whatever Ann Arbor Township wants to see themselves as being. We, for our part, try to do the best as we can by the township. The township has not supported the creation of any parcel that is less than five acres in all the time that I have been here. We have reviewed several lot split applications. We do not allow the creation of non-conforming parcels. In this case, this non-conforming parcel is decades old. It was created even before we had the five-acre minimum on this ordinance. It's not something that was within the control of this applicant or their predecessors. So that is why the situation is unique in that it is a zoning lot of record. Nobody created this, it just happened to be even before we have a zoning ordinance in place. With regard to the applicant renting the property out, that is entirely their prerogative. The township, as a community, cannot dictate that you have to live in a house. You have a right to have a property, as long as the use is a single-family home, you live in it, you rent it out, we cannot question that. That is, the law does not allow us to question if they rented. People have a right to rent out their property. Yes, it would be wonderful to preserve the structure as a museum or a historical structure itself, but that is something that a property owner owns. If they would like to keep the property within their family, they cannot be forced to sell the property. It's their choice to make whether they want to actually sell it to a Historical Society. And in this case, from what I have heard from the history, it's been in the Haggerty family for decades, and they have no interest in taking it out of the family. They have a lot of memory and history tied to the parcel. So that's not something that can be taken into account while we are reviewing a variance either. So while all the comments and concerns that are generated are very well-placed, because they come from members who have lived in this community for a long time and value it, our recommendation on this request for variance is based on ordinance standards and the fact that the existence of the lot is not a newly-created parcel. It has always been there that way. All we are asking is to help preserve the existing historic structure by actually making a structure on the site a feasible structure, that somebody can actually live in. So based upon that, our recommendation would be for the zoning board of appeals to approve the requested variances for the Sutton Schoolhouse, based on several findings of fact. Compliance with the ordinance standards would render this parcel completely unbuildable, which can be construed as being unnecessary burdens. The parcel is one-tenth the minimum lot size required, and it predates the zoning ordinance. The existing nonconformity of the parcel is being reduced marginally with the demolition of the existing nonconforming garage. The variances will provide substantial justice to the applicant and is not adverse to the interests of the other property owners. The unique circumstances related to the history of the parcel, and it's not something that the applicant created. The variance requested is the minimum possible. We don't believe the variances will have a detrimental impact on public health, safety, or welfare. And the requested variances are not adverse to the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance which regulates land use. Subsequent to approval of any variance, the applicant must obtain all building permits prior to the start of construction or demolition. And just for clarification, once again on the record, the only use approved for the site at this time is a single-family home. If it changes to anything else, it needs to come back before me. I'm the zoning administrator of the township, and you cannot change the use on a parcel without coming through the township. So we will know what's going on at the parcel, so if that is of some reassurance to the citizens. Thank you.
Yes. You have the motion on. The motion-
Ms. Otto, go. No, I just say, I had a question for Vadia. If the building would be asked to be used as a museum, would that zoning need to be changed on it?
It will have to come back for a zoning compliance approval, at which time I will review the use again to see if it's being allowed.
Okay.
It could be used as a schoolhouse, though.
In the Ag district, it could possibly be used as a schoolhouse, but it'll have to come back before the zoning administrator again.
Okay. Even though it's an existing nonconforming use?
Absolutely. It's an Ag district, so the residential or the school use is not, schools are permitted in residential districts. So the school use might not be nonconforming. They can do it, but once again, it'll be a change of use. Change of use needs to come back to us.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for case JZBA 180001, Sutton Schoolhouse, at 2931 East Joy Road in Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48105, parcel B023440005. That the applicant, as identified by the zoning administrator and her recommendations, has met the standards of determination for this case. And with that being said, I make a, or I make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
I would like to speak about this, because normally, I'm very deferential to our staff who helped to prepare this. And I think that this is a really unique situation. It is, it is, it is probably about as unique a situation as we will encounter, at least as far as I'm concerned. I think what makes this especially troubling for me is that the lot size is .5 acres. It's, to exaggerate the, that difference, it's almost like, you know, the old joke, you know, "Well, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the show?" You know? There's such a other dramatic aspect of this to say, you know, it's four and a half acres off, right? It's four and a half acres off. It's not twenty feet here, thirty feet there. And if these numbers were on a five-acre lot, and you had five-acre neighbors, I'd be, I think, very amenable to this. The problem I have is that this is so far off, that everything else is almost, every other aspect of the variance is magnified by that problem. That's a huge problem, huge. And I asked, the garage apparently is going away, which probably eliminates another nonconformity of the site, but there's no parking on the property as currently envisioned. And again, if you had two and a half acres, I'd say it's not much of an issue. But it seems to me that on this parcel, you can park in that nonconforming area, which I guess is probably what people will do. Or you can, I guess, maybe provide some sort of parking up front, but there's almost none because of the road. I don't know what the county will allow you to do next to that road. I have no idea what they would allow or not allow you to do off that road. So there's almost no parking on that parcel that then wouldn't extend the nonconforming use, because you either have to park up front, which means you're in the setback, you have to park on the east side, which means you're going to be in the setback, or you're gonna have to park on the west side, which, again, will put you in a difficult area. So as I envision it, you know, to me, that the .5 creates a huge issue here. I don't think this is a modest addition. I think, you know, let's just call it what it is. We're doubling the size of the property. You're doubling it. And it may be, from an economic standpoint, that that's what kind of works. I mean, you turn it into a three-bedroom, the current structure, you know, you get some use out of that, and maybe that works. But it's not a modest addition. It's a big addition, you're doubling the size, and you have no parking for a three-bedroom family. Let's assume it's average, two, three cars, friends come over, the only place they're gonna be able to go is Joy Road. And that's a dicey place right there, where those roads all come together. You're coming right off Joy, traffic's going really fast, they swerve anyway as it currently is. It's just a tough, tough, tough place. So I don't think this is a modest addition, okay? I think it's a, it's a pretty substantial, it's a huge addition in my view. It's a doubling of it, on a small parcel. Now, let me just finish, because I want to go through these. It still makes a close call, but I want to lay out what I think are the realities of what's going on here, and we should be honest at least about that. At least I'd like to be, for my purposes. I think that it's a huge variance on size, you have no parking. And the next thing I'm gonna hear is, you're gonna want a garage. Everybody wants a garage. This is Michigan. Who doesn't want a garage? You're gonna want a carport, you're gonna want something. You're gonna have to put something in there to make this fit, or else those cars are gonna be in someplace that they really shouldn't be. I think as a consequence, allowing this is adverse to the interests of other property owners in the district, everybody who comes by there, and probably the neighbors. I mean, certainly, I think the neighbor to the east is going to be impacted by sounds, views. Certainly, their views and their sounds are gonna be substantial. I mean, I think it's gonna be an impact. I don't think you cause any real problems on the backside, and I don't think you really create much of an issue on the east side, because the east side is mostly uninhabited, it's mostly shrub and chaparral and everything. Front and west, I think, are pretty, you know, but if DTE doesn't complain, they're not here, I don't have any complaints about that. It's unique, you know? It's a unique spot. I, you know, and so that's what I'm torn with. It's unique. And I don't think I've been presented with, I, Mr. Dinsir, you spoke up, and you kind of presented me with, you know, the worst outcome choices, as if those are my only two choices. It's that you go for this, or we'll tear it down, and a commercial development will come there. That's not gonna happen. No commercial developer's gonna go there, because we're not gonna approve that there. So what's the other option? I don't know what the other options are. I haven't been presented with other options. I've been presented with this option, and I don't like it. I think that the problem here has been created, you know, the problem is you have a school on a .5-acre lot. You didn't create that, but you certainly came into possession of it, knowing that that was an issue. This is not, you know, we face issues where somebody's got a swamp, that they didn't quite know how big it was, and they gotta move their driveway a little bit, and we extend that, or they're gonna be a little closer to the lot line, and people are on five acres, and we say, okay, it's okay, you know, we're gonna give you that variance. This is something that is clear, absolutely clear, what this property was. Absolutely, it's absolutely clear how it's bound up. You see it virtually immediately. I didn't even realize, I should say that, that's not necessarily true, I didn't realize that your back lot, until we walked the property, was basically right on your, you know, tail end. I mean, it's really tied up there. I think that by doing this, we actually are, in essence, putting a, you know, not a large, but a, what appears in every way to be a nice, single-family home on a property that is one-fifth the size allowed for every other property. And it's, it's a, is it a modest addition? I don't think it's a modest addition. I think it's a substantial addition, it's a double addition. Could it be used for some other residential purpose? In all of these situations, one is kind of looking at, you know, through a looking glass, who knows, right? I do think it's going to have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. I think it'll have an adverse impact on the neighbors. I think it's gonna end up with traffic on that road. It's gonna be an adverse impact for, through traffic. And I think it's, I think it's going to burden the neighbors. And by that, I say both your neighbors to the east and the west, and everybody who drives by. So I, to me, this is a very difficult decision. And they almost always go, Vidie does a good job in providing her material, but I am inclined to vote no, in part because of the substantial nature of this change, and how nonconforming it is, and that I, it's kind of, I'm presented with an all or nothing, and the all, to me, seems awfully substantial and almost overwhelming for that site. So I'm, you know, those are my thoughts on it. You can probably tell which way I'm leaning, but I'm always subject to the wisdom of my colleagues here, who all have their hands up and wanna talk. Now, Ms. Otto.
Okay. Just to address some points that you made. As members of the ZBA, we can only address what is presented to the ZBA. We cannot address a garage, we cannot address a driveway, we cannot address anything other than what has been presented to us. And to base an opinion or a vote beyond that, it could get us, we could be at risk. So I'm just saying that. Number two, a family did not acquire this, knowing that there was a variance would be an issue. This was acquired back in 1960s, and this, and the five-acre lot probably wasn't even part of, I don't even know if five-acre lots was part of the Ag district back then.
I don't believe we had zoning at that point. It was being done by the county at the planning level.
Right.
There was not zoning in the township at that point, as far as I know.
Yeah, the family acquired the property in 1963. Our first and oldest zoning ordinance that we have is 1969, so they did not know what they were buying. I mean, they just bought it as a piece of land.
Right. And to me, the burden, to me, and this is only, now, this is my opinion, is the burden to neighbors isn't as much as somebody living there as it would be if the building was deteriorated and torn down, and we demolished an historical building because nobody ever took care of it, because it was a burden to the neighbors. I would think that it'd be more of a burden to the neighbors if the property was gone in disarray. So that's my thoughts.
I have a couple of things. One, actually, the property's most recent usage is single-family residential.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So it's not a schoolhouse?
No.
It's a single-family residential structure that happened to be a schoolhouse in its many years past. So the usage is the same as its most recent usage. It is a single-family home. In regards to... home. In regards to views and sounds to the residents to the east, it's a single-family home. It's going to be a single-family home. They're not asking for things beyond that. I really don't see a great deal of impact there. In this community, we have an awfully large number of residential, single-family homes that will never have garages, lean-tos, or parking, undercover parking. I happen to live in one of them, and there's dozens around the lake that have no guest parking at all. And, you know, I don't see that as a concern, looking at the property, looking at the garage that's being demolished. Where they decide to ultimately put that is their prerogative, as long as it meets with road commission requirements of, and it's not a curb cut, but in essence, where the entrance to the property ultimately will be. I see this as the only possible, it's certainly the only financially, it's the only way we can preserve this precious structure. The structure, if left as is, will go into further decay. We will lose it in the community. In light of this, and knowing the amount of work that just went into this, I can tell you in my dozen and a half years of being on the zoning board, I've never seen a presentation put together in a more thoughtful, more detailed way. I do not doubt for a second that the applicant will follow through and will make it a structure that can be proud of, and the heritage of the structure will still be able to be identified. I think that's a very important thing. You know, certainly, the public mentioned grants, those are typically matching grants that come out for preservation of properties. There are things that have to be in place long before the opportunity presents itself to find a structure like that. And that's hard. It's just really hard to come up with that. You know, I personally am grateful to the applicant to make this kind of an investment into a property, especially recognizing that that structure is important to the history of Northfield Township. So with that, I don't want to discount your concerns. I think that you definitely raise some valid concerns with this property dating back in their ownership prior to us even having a zoning ordinance in this township. It is, I don't feel it is fair to try to hold them to a 2018 standard when they bought the property in 63 before, or sixty, yeah, 63. Thank you.
I just.
Yes. I just want to provide a small data fact if it'll help put things in perspective. The size of this parcel seems really tiny when compared to the minimum size requirement for an ag district, but it is the size of two SR1-zoned parcels put together. We have a lot of SR1-zoned parcels in our township, and this is like if somebody bought two SR1 parcels and built a very modest house on it, that would be this. It just, that .5 acre seems very small when you look at five-acre ag parcels, but if you look at a single-family residential parcel, it is, a lot of our zoning map all around, like all the SR1 parcels, this is two lots put together. That's, it meets, it's double the minimum SR1 size for a single-family home.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to respond. I think that that's true. It's not a small lot. Many city lots are that size, but when people buy in that sort of environment, they know that they're on that same lot too. So if I'm on a 40-foot lot and somebody else is on a 40-foot lot or a 60-foot lot, I know my neighbor is too, and everybody's kind of in the same thing. This is a .5 acre in an area that is overwhelmingly five acres, much, much larger places. I don't, I have dealt with constitutional cases on zoning issues, so I'm familiar with what I should or shouldn't have to say about what might be an impact in this particular case. My concern about the garage is there isn't one. And in some places, people might not have one because they have a lake lot, that, you know, and, or they might be in a position, or they might be on five acres, and they have so much space that no one who's a neighbor really has any concern about where the cars are. The only reason I brought it up in this issue is we're asked to make a change and grant somebody the right to build a nice house. It's nice. It looks nice on half an acre with no provision for parking in anything that we've seen, right? There's nothing in this really nice, sophisticated proposal that I'm sure was well thought through that includes anything about where the parking is going to be. There's not even a sense of a driveway or anything. And my point on that is, it seems that in looking at it, to me, that adds to the sense of the non-conformity. I have half an acre on a place where, at least as far as I can see, wherever the cars are going to go are going to further the failure to, you know, to meet the zoning ordinance. And we can talk about how this came into ownership. We know that real ownership of this party existed when this party knew about it. So whether relatives, et cetera, might have had it, I don't need to go into that whole history of it. I don't really, I'm not, it doesn't really concern me. But the progeny of it is, is, you know, is as it is, but I do think that the current owners knew about this situation. It's a tough case. I don't, I don't, I don't mean to make light of it anyway. This is a very, very difficult decision. I just am troubled by the, what I think is a substantial addition on a very small lot in this neighborhood with no provision for what I would think are the normal things that people would expect on a lot of this, a house of this type, which would be a garage. And I think people would. And if you don't, okay, still where are the cars going to go? And that's, you know, so those are my concerns. So.
Two quick things. One is the folks that are around that property that have five acres, I'm sorry, but you bought there knowing that that was a half-acre lot there with a single-family home on it. You did. And if you didn't check, that's your fault. That's not anyone else's fault. If you move into a neighborhood and find out that there's a plant a block and a half away and you didn't check into it, that burden is on you. That burden is not on the owner of the plant. So that property existed there long before at least one of the neighbors who spoke tonight was buying their property. And if they didn't check on that 10 years ago, and what's going on around them, and what the commercial zoning is, and what the, what the parcels just south of them were going to be in Ann Arbor Township, that, I can't.
I just have a question. How would, how would they have known that this, what looks like a schoolhouse and wasn't in use, as far as I know, for certainly the past decade? How would you know that it was, had before that been used as a family, a single-family residence? How would you find that out?
Ask at the township that you're moving into. That's, that's an easy thing to do. You go into the community you're going into and you ask. Many people don't do that when they buy homes, and then they end up with difficult situations. The other thing, I have to reiterate, Ms. Otto stated, was parking is not our purview. It's not within the zoning board of appeals' ability to discuss unless there's a plan in front of us that contains a parking structure of, that they're going to be parking in, whether it be a garage or covered parking. Unfortunately, we can't consider that according to state law when it comes to determining a variance. They have to address that with the proper departmental authorities. Zoning here, road commission, that's where that has to be dealt with. That's their job, not ours, unfortunately.
Can I get that? But that, what you're saying isn't really so. The reality is, I can consider what the site has in allowing them to have a non-conformity because I think they're going to otherwise create problems in the district or with their neighbors because I don't see how, there's nothing that deals with where their cars are going to go. There's no law that tells me I can't look at that. I can look at anything that might impact the health and welfare of neighbors. So it's, there's, there's nothing that prevents me from doing it.
Except that you're creating zoning. You're creating zoning that doesn't exist.
I'm not creating zoning.
You are.
I'm being asked to grant a variance on something, and I'm considering all the factors. I can consider all factors that are allowed, and one of them is the impact that this is going to make on neighbors, okay? And, and I voiced what I thought that would. I'm not saying they need to tell me about a garage or not. I'm saying that because I don't see anything on these plans that deals with parking, it gives me pause because I don't, I think that anywhere you put vehicles is going to have an impact either on the east side of the property, or on the front, or on the parking. And so really, I'm not, I don't have to imagine that people don't drive cars today. I can take that into account. I can't say, well, they don't have a variance for a garage here, so I can't take a garage into consideration. I'm not taking the garage into consideration. I'm taking the absence of any information that tells me how cars are going to be parked and how that will impact the rest of the, its placement in the neighborhood. So I'm not asking, show me a garage. I'm not asking that. I.
I just don't know how we, I just don't know how we get to the point that we're considering where licensed motor vehicles are going to be as part of a granting of a variance because they don't have any relevance at all to any of the dimensional variances that we're granting. The dimensional variances we are granting have absolutely nothing to do with licensed motor vehicles that are not part of the planning and zoning code.
That, that's not the question. The question is, does the use create problems for neighbors? And I say, yes, it does. It does because there's no provision here for a garage.
But that's, that's its existing use. It's not a new use.
Only if I grant it. Only if we grant it.
No.
If we grant the use, then, so, right now, they've got parking. It's half the size. They've got twice as much room to put something on there. I don't need to argue about it, okay? You've got your position. I disagree with it. I think you're wrong. You think I'm wrong. I'm telling you why I think you're wrong. You're telling me why you think I'm wrong. So I don't need to argue about it. I understand your position. I just think you're wrong, and you think I am. That's fine.
Okay.
Great.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have any more discussion than we need to vote?
Yeah. I'll call the question. Dignan?
Yes.
Kolecki?
I vote yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Sefranic?
I vote no.
Motion passed. Okay. Election of Officers.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Tell Kellyanne Rodger I said hello. You did a nice job tonight.
I do, of course, of course, you don't know.
Don't know.
Gentlemen, when you do get copy of the minutes from downtown or downstairs, then you can apply for your building permits. Okay?
You already have a zoning.
You already have a zoning compliance permit. That's what triggered your variance. I told you, you cannot use it unless you get a variance.
And you.
You got your variance. Now, your next step is to submit building plans to the building official. So that'll be your next step.
See you, Cory.
Tom McGraw says hello.
You know, Tom.
I spoke to, at last, before the Democrats.
Tom, I said hello. The Tom, Tom McGraw, Jr., I think, or senior. How old is he?
Um.
Forty-five?
He was a student.
Yes. Yeah. Could have been his dad. Thank you. Okay. Election of Officers. Who would like to serve as chair? Do we have any nominees, and even self-nominees?
I make a motion that Mr. Sefranic continues chair.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay. Do we need, do we need a vice?
Yes, just in case you're not there, somebody has to be there.
Yeah, yeah. Jackie, were you the vice chair last year?
No, I cannot.
I wouldn't have a, Ken.
Ken. I second you, Ken, as the vice chair.
Thanks.
All those, any opposed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So just so you know, the reason why I can't is because I am a.
Oh, right, 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 right. I remember that. Yep, I got that.
I think you need a secretary too, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's perfect. All right.
I make a motion that Mr. Kolecki continue as secretary.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay. Zoning Administrator Quarterly Report. You have that in your packets?
Yes.
Do we need to do anything other than to, it's just noted for our, okay, so we don't need to do anything at that?
Just to let the board know, construction activity has really picked up this month. Lots of zoning compliance applications, new homes, new decks, people investing in their homes with additions. So it's, it's nice. People are putting money back into their homes, which is the first sign for the community to be healthy, so.
That's a big plus.
Yes.
I always like to see my neighbor putting something nice on their property.
There are some beautiful new homes that I recently approved on larger parcels, and the homes are just so beautiful. Just.
I like to tell my neighbors, outdo what I did, please, and then I'll.
There you go. Exactly. Absolutely. Okay. Call to the public. Is there anyone else who would like to speak other than, as we've spoken already today? Nothing? Okay. Any other comments?
Did we, did we have to approve the minutes from January 27?
We did that. We did that.
You did the, okay, yeah.
Move them up. That's okay.
Sorry.
That's what happens when we confuse the agenda. The next meeting is scheduled for June 18, 2018. Do we have anything currently on record? Do we know, Vidya? Is there anything on?
Yes, yes, there will be one case for you on.
Okay. Is everybody, are we going to have a quorum? Vacation, let's think early.
I'm not going to be here.
Okay. And we don't know that Ken is.
Hang on, I'll tell you in a second.
Brad?
I'll be here.
I'll be out of town.
Okay, so we got.
Yeah, I got it on my calendar. About that.
You're in.
I'll be here.
Okay. So let me check my calendar. Might, that's close. I'm leaving town, I know, right around there, but I'm not certain of that date. Let me check right. It's good to know no, right?
Yes. So we have Mr. Kolecki and Mr. Dignan for sure.
So we have two, so we need one more to make it.
Ms. Otto won't be there.
Okay, the 18th. I think I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll also have Mary check with the other members.
Yeah, she always checks, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Kuzno or Mr. Balsillie, at least one of them will be here.
Okay. Anything else? Move to adjourn.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Mr. Kemp, thank you especially. Mr. Kemp, thank you especially.